Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District shall come to order. It's fifteen minutes after nine AM. And in accordance with the open government law, notices this roundtable were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders, five days in advance on September 28th, and a second notice was sent on September 30th of 2016. There's a couple items on the agenda. There's one appointment, there's two bills, and two resolutions. The appointment is for Mr. Jesse Rosario to be a member of the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council for a four-year term. I have bill number 347 introduced by myself, and it's relative to the Recycling Revolving Fund, to make it a separate account, not to be commingled with the General Fund. I have another bill introduced by me, requiring the Department Administration report to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency the current balance and transactions of the Recycling Revolving Fund, and to further require this information to be posted on the Guam Environmental Protection Agency website. And I have two resolutions relative to requesting this resolution 418-33 relative to requesting the support of the legislature for executive order 2016-5 issued by Governor Eddie Baza Calvo, and conveying that the rule of law must remain at the core of the Calvo Administration's efforts to deport foreign criminals from Guam. And another resolution 433-33 also introduced by myself, and it's relative to urging Congresswoman Malin Burdali to take all measures necessary to have the Immigrations and Customs Division of the Department of Homeland Security take a more active role in enforcing and implementing the deportation of all foreign habitual criminals. And so, ladies and gentlemen, you could see because of my committee assignment here, we're gonna go through many spectrums of the issues. And so, I'll start with the appointment of Mr. Jesse Rosario. And I have signed, let me call the nominee up. Mr. Rosario, and then Julie Rosario, would you, just in support? And then Judy Rosario, you're here to provide support. And Michael Duñez. So it looks like just the nominee will be testifying this morning? But I did receive some letters of support via email, and so we'll make that a part of the committee report. But you have been appointed by Governor Calvo to serve as a member of the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council for a four-year term. You know, I think it's the first time that this committee's ever entertained an appointment like this. Is this subject to legislative confirmation? Maybe before you can, before you testify, you could give, just so if people listening on TV, give a quick overview of how this council was created, the authority by which it was created, and basically some of the duties and responsibilities. And then I'll also allow you to go ahead and give your testimony.
Mike?
Mike? This is, because this is a fairly new council, so is, but was this this? I don't have the enabling legislation creating the council. But go ahead, Mr. Duñez, give us a quick overview, and then I'll recognize, this is the first appointment that Governor Calvo made, and how many members have to be appointed?
It's my understanding that this body is basically an advisory panel, an advisory body. They don't have any powers, they don't have any authority to make rules, but what they do, what they are, is a group of stakeholders from different aspects of the community to advise the legislature, the governor, the appropriate agencies on matters pertaining to fisheries and fisheries conservation on Guam.
And... How was this council created?
I believe it was introduced by Senator McCready.
Oh, okay.
And it went through the public hearing process to vet any concerns and vet how the panel was to be consisted of. I believe there's members of UOG, there's at-large members, there's members of the Fishermen's Co-op, members of the various fishing organizations on Guam, to include the Marianas Underwater Fishing Federation, and also the Guam Organization of Saltwater Anglers. So these are the fishermen, these are the members of the community that if there's any questions or anything, any problems that they see in the community, that they can put their heads together and then give advice to the appropriate people.
And what is your role with the council?
I am not with the council.
Okay.
I'm just a member of the community, a longtime fisherman.
Okay.
But I also...
Maybe after your testimony, Governor will appoint you.
But I am...
I'm thinking they need more members, right?
I'm pretty sure they're just in the selection process. There's even gonna be members from the grassroots organizations that have to be selected. So it's gonna be a diverse group, and it's gonna be a true representation of the community. One thing I see about this advisory body is it actually doesn't even include all fishermen. Like I said, there's at-large members, there's members of the grassroots organization, which really truly makes it diverse. They included members of the university, and you don't see that on any other advisory body. The medical board consists of doctors, you don't see an at-large member on the medical board. So I, that's how I feel that this group was selected, was to be a true representation of what's going on in the community.
But I just want to make sure that the appointments to this advisory council is subject to the advice and consent of the legislature. I just want to make sure, because the less, the legislature has to, in other words, if the governor's going to wait for these appointments to be publicly heard and be confirmed before this advisory council can move forward, then that might impede the development and the ability to get this council stood up.
Oh, yes, yes. I've seen the selection process, the selection criteria, and it's quite extensive.
Because it's normally boards and commissions that are confirmed that actually have some kind of authority. Advisory councils are totally, I know, I saw the appointment letter, but that doesn't mean that it's subject to, but I'll go ahead and take your testimony, just in case, but I'm gonna be looking to see going forward if the legislature has to confirm the appointments to this advisory council. My thinking is it's not, and I should have reviewed this before scheduling the hearing, but my staff knows that the quicker we get things done, the happier I am. So I'm happy you're here, and I'll go ahead and receive your testimony. But my feeling is that I don't believe that the appointments made to this advisory council are subject to advice and consent of the legislature. That's just my instinct.
Right. And I also want to add to what Michael was saying, the diversified committee of this, of the members of this committee also include part of the mayor's council, and the Department of Agriculture directors, so it is, it has the governing agency that would oversee the program.
Yeah. Okay. We'll go ahead and recognize you this time, and while you're doing that, Jen, could you pull up the bill and give it, the law, and give it to me? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So half a day, Mr. Senator, Mr. Chairman, Senator, we appreciate you, and if any of the members show up to the Guam, 33 Guam Legislature. My name is Jesse Bloz Rosario, I'm a citizen of Guam, born and raised on this beautiful island of ours. I am here before this committee on a nomination by Magalhain Guan, Governor Eddie Baza Calvo, to serve as a committee member on the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council for a four-year term, with the advice and consent of the legislature in Guan. I'm a lifelong pescado, starting at a very young age of seven, with my family in Familien Temben, a fishing family for generations. Fishing is my passion, and I am strong advocate, a steward of our ocean and freshwater ecosystem and marine resources. To ensure that our ocean and freshwater resources are cared and protected, I've obligated my time and effort to engage and participate in various organizations and committees that serve to develop conservation and management practice, as well as perpetuating our traditional and cultural practices involving our ocean and freshwater. Listed are some of my involvements. I am an active member and Board Secretary to the Executive Board of the Guam Fishermen's Cooperative Association, and had served as Guam's representative on Northwest Marine Advisory Council, a member of the Recreational Fisheries Working Group. I currently serve as an advisory panel member for the Marianas Fisheries Ecosystem Plan Team for the Western Pacific Regional Fisheries Management Council, located in Hawaii, which is regulated and mandated by the Magnuson Stevens Conservation and Management Act. While serving under this council, I've gained valuable knowledge and gained numerous contacts and friends abroad. I've also gained personal knowledge and experiences on fisheries management and conservations, attending scoping meetings with stakeholders on best practices on fisheries management and conservation. These meetings also provide the opportunity to listen to stakeholders from various Pacific Island nations, such as Hawaii, America, Samoa, Siamai, and Guam, on their fisheries challenges and issues. Through the council, I've also learned to engage with council officers, seeking their advice, the relative provisions and understanding of the Magnuson Stevens Fisheries Conservation and Management Act, the core manual of our existence. The Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council is a newly created council for Guam, its ocean, fresh waters, and fisheries, and my involvement and role is to ensure this council fulfills the duties and obligations by promulgating the provisions of public law 33-144, formally bill number 160-33. As a council member, I would work with my council colleague to coordinate and promote conservation and sustainable development of Guam's ocean, fisheries, and marine resources, to develop, impose, and issue permits for the general public based on the approved schedule of fees, oversee the expenditure and management of funds in the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Conservation and Development Fund, to provide advice and information to Magalhain Guan, and to the legislature in Guan, to develop programs to enhance and promote sustainable use of Guam's marine and freshwater resources, and to collaborate with the Department of Agriculture in the expenditures of the funds derived from marine activities, or federal grants, and other ocean, fisheries, and marine-related funding, to seek legal advice from the Attorney General's Office on the creation of ocean and freshwater use policies, regulations, and fees, to provide public education and awareness on Guam's ocean, freshwater, and fisheries rules and regulations, and to network and partner with both private and government sectors. Further acknowledging the council's plan for the coming years, I agree to support and commit to the council's objective to meet its mission in serving our community. I would advocate for the council in good standing and preserve the council's integrity through my actions and belief in fisheries management and conservation. As a steward of our ocean's resources, and an advocate for fishermen and waterway users, I believe my participation as a council member on the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council would help ensure that our children, grandchildren, and others will be able to enjoy the traditional ways of our fishing, and enjoying our beautiful coastal base, marine, and freshwater activities. It is imperative to sustain our island fisheries through proper teaching and management that have been practiced for, in generations, for thousands of years. Senator, Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask you to monitor for your consideration and approval of my appointment to the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Management Council.
Thank you, Mr. Rosario, for your willingness to serve on this council. This is a very important council, and I recall during the discussion of this bill that was public law, that became public law, and it's created a new Article 9, 63902, I moved an amendment in this bill that Bill 160-33 deals with indigenous fishing rights, if I'm not mistaken. That's correct. So I made an amendment to Senator McCready's bill to make it so that this council will now figure out how to move that whole indigenous fishing rights bill law forward. There was a requirement for the Department of Agriculture with the various stakeholders to develop rules and regs, and it was forwarded to the Attorney General's Office, and so this council now will be tasked with additional responsibility of trying to navigate that whole issue. Have you been following the indigenous fishing rights issue, and how do you feel about that?
I'm not totally following the traditional fishing rights, but I'm totally aware of what the program is about. I know for a fact they met several times, the Department of Agriculture. There were challenges, however, there are issues that needs to be resolved, but again, we look forward to engaging and working with these folks. I think with this body, we're able to move forward, and maybe create something that would serve both the general public and the indigenous Chamor fishermen's.
Okay. And I just have a copy of the statute, and I do stand corrected, the Ocean and Fisheries Management Council is comprised of nine members, and because it's spelled out that it's appointed by the governor with advice and consent of the legislature, so you're gonna, you're the first appointment to this council. Is there any idea when the governor will make the additional appointments? Because we want to move quickly. We, we've been, this kind of idea that was sponsored by Senator McCready, as you can agree, is long time coming.
Yes, it is, sir. From my understanding with the governor's office, the members have been chosen, they're filling out the application as we speak. I know I've made some contacts with other of my colleagues, that they're completing their application and submitting it to the governor's office.
And then when I moved my amendment to have this council deal with the whole indigenous fishing rights issue, there was another amendment that we did to have four council members appointed by the community at large, two individuals of which shall be appointed to represent the Chamor grassroots organizations, to kind of balance that issue as well. Do, you can already see how complex that issue's gonna be, right? It's been. And then your council's gonna be, consist of different organizations, as Michael pointed out. Okay? Do you have anything else to add? Michael? Go ahead.
If you're done.
I'm done.
Just, just because I am in support also, I wanted to mention a few things that Jesse didn't mention.
Okay.
He's really knowledgeable and has a lot of fisheries background, I just wanted to mention that he is, comes from a long line of generations of fishing on Guam. He is also an active supporter of the 4H Fisheries Program, and he volunteers his time to work with the youth of Guam in fisheries and fisheries-related issues, as well as, he didn't mention that he was also the chairman of the Westpac Advisory Panel, so with all of that, I believe he is more than qualified to serve on this.
Well, it's good you pointed that out, because on page six, line 16, it talks about the election of officers, and so once this council is constituted, they'll have to elect a chair and vice chair. So maybe there's a reason why your appointment came down first. So now you've gone through the confirmation process, you're gonna probably continue to work with the governor and the governor's office to get the other eight members appointed, so we could work fast in the legislature to get this council up and going. I'm excited about the creation of this council, it's another organization that can provide not only the checks and balances, transparencies, and accountability as well. Okay? If you have nothing further to add, your confirmation hearing has been publicly heard, and that we will certainly move forward. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Good job, Mike. You sure you're not interested? You sure you're not? I know that somebody's watching. You might get a call later on today. I want to call up representatives of the Environmental Protection Agency, and I'll hear both bills at the same time, Bill 347 and 348. Okay. So here, on behalf of the EPA Administrator, is Ms. Conchita Titano. Conchita.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our Administrator, Walter Leon Guerrero, extends his sincerest apologies for being unable to attend today's hearing due to conflicting, his conflicting meeting schedules. Guam EPA will be providing written comments within the required timeline with respect to the two bills.
Okay, before I recognize you, Ms. Titano, I want to give myself an opportunity to provide a sponsor statement and give an overview of these two bills. The genesis of these two bills really result from audit findings, how over the last many years since the creation of the Recycling Revolving Fund, we've seen monies transferred out of the Recycling Revolving Fund, I think to the tune of 12 million, if I'm not mistaken. We want to make it in one bill, to make it so that this really makes it so that it's separate apart from the General Fund, that's what the current law says, it says it shall not be commingled, but the challenge that EPA has over the years is that you get a bank balance, or you get your statement, your reconciliation, you get your bookkeeping balance, rather, from the department, but it's always different from what's shown on the AS400 or the bank, the bank balance. And so we think that the one way to resolve this issue is to authorize EPA to open up its own checking account, and that's what Bill 347 would do. Bill 348 was a result of a roundtable hearing that we had on the status of the Recycling Revolving Fund, and there was some, some desire to make it so that any transactions of the Recycling Revolving Fund be posted on the Environmental Protection Agency website, and to further assist EPA, part of the mandate of this particular bill, if it becomes law, would be to make it so that the Department Administration has to remit the current balance of this fund. And so I would continue to recognize you to go ahead and let me know from your agency's perspective, how you feel about these two bills. Are you prepared to do that, or are you gonna defer to the Administrator?
We, I'm going to defer to the Administrator, and it's my understanding that the agency will be submitting written comments within the allotted timeframe.
Are you prepared to say whether you are not, you're in favor of the bills?
I am not, Senator.
You're not in favor of the bills?
I'm not, I am not prepared to make a statement on behalf of the agency.
Okay. No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming down just to say that the Administrator's tied up with something else, it's better than a no-show at all, so, okay. But for purposes of this, these two matters, these bills are publicly heard, but if we do have an opportunity to have a follow-up hearing with EPA, otherwise, I'm thinking it's not gonna be so much of a problem for EPA. The only biggest problem with one of the bills would be the continued cash management of the government, but I continue to say that when people pay their $25 on their vehicle license registration, we pay these fees, we have to make sure that every single penny goes toward recycling efforts, which is why we have a new bill that was passed and is signed into law to assist the recycling industries, to give them $30 per ton, and I thank you for your work and your guidance toward those initiatives, to make it so that whatever money is available from the Recycling Revolving Fund will be tied up in actual recycling initiatives. So that, that was only a stopgap measure. What we're waiting for is the rules and regulations, and if the agency desires to continue that program, in those rules and regs, it could be reflected.
Right, and I'd like to add, Mr. Chairman, that Guam EPA has drafted the required rules and regulations for the Recycling Revolving Fund, and we expect to have the public comment period available for this month, actually, the month of October. They were ready since last month, but because it was already towards the end of the fiscal year, we decided, we made, we made a decision to, to open the public comment period for October, the beginning of this fiscal year.
Okay, and so these two bills could have qualified to go into the Budget Act, but I didn't want to move it into the budget bill without the guidance of the EPA. And I'm thinking these two things, well, one definitely is, they're both public interest, but one more so than the other is to provide for transparency, to post all the transactions, including any transfers out of the fund onto the website. But the other thing, really, I think the public would demand that this really be maintained as a separate account, so that those monies will be protected.
Okay, we understand.
So I'm hoping that I would get the good news from EPA, that Administrator would support these bills.
Indeed.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that, I have nothing further to add.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Conchita. And I want to recognize Sabrina also that's here, she's, well, we, I could use this time to ask you for updates, but it's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Do you know, our next two bills, our next two resolutions on the agenda, all deal with the deportation issue. We did send notices out to the governor's office, to the US Attorney General. We sent notices out to all our foreign diplomats, and I recognize and thank a few of them that are here. The genesis of these two resolutions is to, to really make it so that the rule of law is the cornerstone in any federal policy, any local policy, and we understand that Governor Calvo's been very aggressive to get the federal government to provide for these deportation issues, and I've supported that. What I'm also asking by way of one resolution is to have the legislature support those efforts, but to make it so that, and I know this has never been anyone's intent, to make it so that it's not targeted toward one particular population. And if you read these resolutions, it reflects that it's the deportation of all foreign habitual criminals, and it doesn't specify one population over the other, it's not a discriminatory policy, and both these resolutions speak to how the federal government has to take the lead in the deportation of all foreign criminals. I want to recognize the Korean consulate that's here, as well as the Palau consulate, the consul general of Palau, Mr. Mark Hinois, or the Philippine Consul General, is he not here? Vic April from the Palau consulate's office, and Mr. Yun is also here from the Korean consulate. And you just, you're just here to monitor the hearing, I'm sure. Yeah, so we've also invited the US Attorney General's Office to kind of publicly have an opportunity to give an overview of what these deportation proceedings look like. We've invited the Attorney General's Office as well. Next time, we should have a hearing after they've confirmed whether or not they're able to be here, because there's no sense in us moving forward on these two resolutions if the very people who want to question are not here. So having said that, we're gonna reschedule another public hearing on these resolutions. It's my hope that in the resolution, it'll be amended, so we actually put the deportation policy into the resolution. The resolution has no full force and effect of law, but if it's memorialized somewhere, at least there could be some guiding principle. And I did have conversations, very effective conversations, with both Attorney General Barrett Anderson, and also US Attorney Alicia Lamtiaco relative to this issue, and so they're, they're gonna be participating in the development of this, the evolution of this resolution, and also, one of the resolutions with urging Congressman Malin Burdali to take all measures necessary, the Congresswoman has responded that she's in support of the resolution, and she's in active talks with Assistant Secretary of the Interior Esther Kayana. So despite these resolutions still being in committee, the work continues, and the work continues together with the different consulate offices to make, oh yeah, Mark, I see you. Yeah, thank you. To make sure that, that the different consulate offices are a part of this process every step of the way, to make sure that it's not discriminatory, doesn't target one population over the other, and that in any treaty between the United States and any state or territory, deportation is always a clause in there, that if they're a habitual foreign criminal, the deportation is also an option. And in, and in the President Obama's administration, they tout a 70% success rate in deporting all foreign criminals out of the United States, but yet that's, that high number, 70%, doesn't translate here on Guam. So we're hoping we can get the community's support by way of these resolutions, we're hoping to have the continued support of the different consulate offices, and also the leaders throughout Micronesia, to have the federal government be a part of this deportation. this deportation process. And in the last five deportations, I read in the paper that the governor is returning, remitting them, or turning them over to the federal government. So, I think this is where we're, we're headed already. And so, with that, we're going to have a follow-up hearing on these two resolutions, but anybody wishing to provide testimony, please do so by way of email or delivering it to the office. Okay? So, thank you, everybody. These resolutions have somewhat been publicly heard, but I'd like to continue this discussion. It needs to be amended, and that at this time, we're adjourned. Thank you.